All right, good evening. Call the meeting to order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Ohm.
Yes.
Ohi.
Yep.
Saxor.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
All right, thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. No conflict of interest, disclosure or waiver request tonight. That takes us to approval of our meeting minutes from September 12th and September 26th. If there's nothing to be corrected on those, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Community input, I don't believe there is any tonight. So, that takes us to our next item, which is financial items, bills and claims. Mr. Lombard.
Okay. Be sure to interrupt me with any questions you'd have. I did have a few marked. On page three, we redid the Brandon Elementary North parking lot. You probably noticed that driving by on Holly Boulevard, that was $66,000. On page five, Contract Paper Group, $37,698. It's a 57% increase from our paper last year. Right below that, Core Educational Co-op, that's $31,850. That's the high school distance learning, uh, first semester cost for 22 kids. I think I counted. Uh, page eight, Gilhaugen Construction, $481,000. Brings the total paid to $1.8 million, which is about 20% of the total. In the middle of that page, High Point Tech Networks, $73,124. Middle school Chromebooks, that total, we paid for 900 Chromebooks at the middle school, it was $455,000, which amounted to just right at about $500 each. Page 10, Lewis Drug, uh, I think maybe David would be the only one that didn't know. We provide a flu shot to all of our staff each year, $8,200. Page 11, Midway Oil, Volin Oil, $35,108. I went back to the same time period last year when we paid the bill. Gas is up 21%, diesel is up 30% from the same time last year. Page 12, right at the very top, you'll see, uh, three new school buses. Those are those propane school buses, Mr. Henshaw purchased, $360,000. Page 13, Prairie Grass Irrigation, that, uh, is the practice football field, the drainage swell, detention pond up there to make that look decent. So we had that irrigated and, uh, hydro seeded. Page 16, Tech Thai, Technology and Innovation of Education. This is the online courses for elementary children. This is a monthly bill, $6,650. I think I counted 14 elementary kids in distance learning. Total on page 17 of $1,584,000. Advanced payments follows that with $2,254 of invoices that we paid prior to the board meeting. Pay vouchers follow, $72,827. Those that have been here in the past, that's a pretty sizable jump from what you're used to seeing. It used to be $50,000 or something in there. Uh, majority of that is, we had a substantial increase in our substitute pay, if you remember. 20% increase in what we're paying for substitutes, so that accounts for the majority of it. Food service bills of $213,738.
Any questions for Mr. Lombard tonight on the bills and claims? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented, please.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Um, next, the financial report. Mr. Lombard, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Cash report for the month of, uh, September, came into the month with $16 million, $3.3 million of receipts, $5,473,000 of expenditures, left $13.8 million of cash at the end of the month. $8.1 million in the general fund, $3.8 million in the capital outlay fund, $1.3 million in the special ed fund, $570,000 in the bond redemption fund, and $20,000 in our enterprise fund. The $3.3 million is itemized in the next two pages. Each month, when you guys, when you get the board packet, I mean, every receipt that's in the Brandon Valley School District runs through these generally two pages or whatever. So it's always good to glance at those. Uh, next report is the investment report, two U.S. Treasury purchases for $2 million. Payroll and benefits summary for the month of September, $2,369,000. It's just, that was the September payroll, so the hourly people, classified people were a little light, the school time people on that, on that payroll. So the total payroll for each school year month with a four-week pay period will be about 2.4, 2.5 million, 2.4 or 5 million. And I'll try to delineate when we have differences, if we have in-service pay or something like that, but that would be the normal payroll, just under $2.5 million. This is the first month of, uh, financial reports for the school board. First quarter, 25%. First page is the revenues. I don't put much credence in the revenue percentages at this early in the, in the fiscal year. I generally say that come December, when we get halfway through, then the revenues start becoming meaningful in the percentages. Expenditures, uh, general fund, at the bottom of the page, you'll see a 25.25%. I always write in the same time last year, last year, 24.3% in the general fund. One quarter of the year, so it's basically right on to the, to the budget. A little bit higher than last year. That can change, just one bill getting paid in this month rather than next month. Capital outlay fund is 28% expended versus 47% last year. Mainly the major item in there is the 9.3 million for the construction of the high school addition, and that's the whole project, so that'll probably go over two fiscal years, so it's gonna be under expended. Special ed is at 20% versus 21% last year. And the bond redemption fund is 30% last year and this year. Food service fund, you'll see it, the accrued profit and loss at the end of September was $5,200 loss. The days of the million-dollar profits in food service are gonzo. They're, they're just, that federal reimbursement thing for the last two years has just been a, uh, boom for the food service fund, so I think we're, yeah, we're scheduled for a $260,000 loss. I fully anticipate that to occur. So, last year at this time, it was a profit of $292,000, so that just shows you the federal reimbursements that were already streaming in at the, from September first quarter. Trust and agency statement, $234,000, amounts held for others. That's all I have. That's enough.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lombard tonight on the financial report? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, financial report as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And thank you much, very much, Mr. Lombard. General business, administration reports, administrative center, Superintendent Larson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just have a few items to, uh, update the board on here this, uh, this evening. Um, Mr. Lombard previously spoke about the CNS Department and, uh, the, uh, the funds received by the feds as opposed to when we were all free meals versus now. Uh, one item that we continue to work through is the importance of the free and reduced meal application being completed by, uh, families that may qualify. Now that we are nearing a quarter of the way through the school, you're starting to see those, uh, those negative balances, et cetera, are things that we are having to work through. And this is the number one must-do, must-be-completed prior to us working through any other process with a family. If they feel as though, um, there's hardship in terms of paying for their meals, there has to be a free and reduced meal application on file. And I would reinforce to the Board of Education that we are committed to providing the reduced meal at no cost to families, uh, in the Brandon Valley School District during the '22, '23 school year. So, um, that is the first one non-negotiable that has to happen prior us, prior to us entertaining any questions about, uh, angel funds and costs and those various things. So they folks have to complete the free and reduced meal application, absolutely critical, um, as we work through this school year. Uh, accreditation, South Dakota, through the, uh, South Dakota Department of Education will take place on November 22nd. Uh, we're working through our submission process of our respective documents. Uh, all of those documents are due to the Department of Ed, uh, October 25th. So we are in the process of completing that, and accreditation will occur as, as a desk audit on November 22nd. Uh, fall enrollment is 5,002 students, uh, grades JK through 12. That's a total growth number of 136 students. Uh, the reason that I state that that's tentative is there may be, um, one or two here or there that, uh, we have to clean up that are on an overlap report or those various types of things. So, um, we will finalize that, all of that information here, um, by the end of this week, I believe. So, uh, ultimately, 5,002 students is a real close, uh, number in terms of what your fall enrollment is going to be. We have 5,035 students, including early childhood. The breakdown in respective, uh, levels is there for your review as well. FY '22 Teacher Compensation Accountability Report was recently, uh, provided to us from the Department of Education. Uh, that report in full was included within your board packet. Um, very, very proud to note that the Brandon Valley School District has the number-two average teacher compensation in the state of South Dakota, with that average compensation being $75,781. Uh, you were edged out only by Ogallala Lakota at $78,772. So, this accountability is a piece from 2017, the legislative session in 2017. And, um, I would tell you that it is incredible when you look at the growth in your teacher comp from 2017 to 2022. Uh, it is a testament to the work that has been done by the Board of Education and the commitment that you have to your staff, specifically your teaching staff. So, uh, hats off to you, the Brandon Valley Board of Education, and your commitment to your teachers. Would note that comp includes, uh, the benefits associated with, um, uh, employment. So when you look at that report, you can see average salary, but then also the average, uh, benefit cost. Your benefit costs are near, approximately are close to $20,000, if my memory serves me correctly. So, um, an absolute testament to the work that you have done, and hats off to the Board of Education for prioritizing teacher pay, um, over the course of these last five years. The only other item that I would note that is also of what I think, uh, some level of importance, when you look at the report, you can see the 2017 number, and you can see the 2022 number, and there's a difference. And I am proud to tell you that the difference for the Brandon Valley School District is significant, and if not the top, very, very close to the top. And when you look across that report, there are some that didn't move quite so much. So, uh, I believe that you guys have taken the dollars provided to you from that, uh, 2017 session and prioritized them correctly. So, again, job well done on teacher pay. Uh, public report card release, uh, from last year will come out on October 13th. I will tell you that overall, when you look at the proficient or advanced academic performance data across the district, uh, it is outstanding. Um, in totality, it's as high as it's ever been. We may have a grade level or a subject area here or there that may have had better years, but overall, you have not had a better year in terms of, uh, academic performance within the Brandon Valley School District. And we also have three schools that have been identified for school improvement. So Brandon Elementary is going to be designated for target improvement, uh, in the area of subgroup attendance. Inspiration Elementary is, uh, identified as target improvement for subgroup, uh, attendance. And our High School Distance Learning Academy, uh, is designated for improvement due to the, uh, graduation rate. So, if you can remember a number of years ago when we went in, went through COVID and we told kids not to come to school, uh, if they didn't feel well, uh, that apparently has come back to haunt us a little bit in this, uh, general, uh, category. And then the other piece is, uh, your superintendent outsmarted himself and split out our distance learning groups from our school buildings because of concerns in terms of, uh, them bringing down or it negatively affecting school performance index scores at the high school, the middle school, the intermediate school, respectively. Uh, also, um, at the elementary level, we had all of our kids across the district that were supposed to be in various buildings. We put them in one elementary, so it skewed their respective data. So we pulled them out from a systemic standpoint and created our distance learning academies. And the small number of kiddos that we had in that respective group has led us to, um, have this, uh, situation in terms of graduation rate. I, I have no further information to report to you in terms of process at this point in time, uh, but that will be forthcoming once we begin our work with, uh, the Department of Education on those, uh, respective designations. Also proud to report, received, um, an email from, uh, the online school district ranking, um, program niche. Uh, the Brandon Valley School District was the number-one school district in the state of South Dakota, uh, for, um, the 23 school district rankings. It is relevant to note that in 2022, we were number-two behind Hill City, so, um, also just an item to note. Uh, academic calendar business, uh, today, we had no school for in-service. Uh, we launched our CLC, uh, program, so look forward to hearing from, uh, our administration and staff in terms of how that process went. Uh, October 28th is the end of quarter one. There is no school on November 11th for Veterans Day. Uh, Wednesday, November 23rd through Friday, November 25th, no school for Thanksgiving break. Uh, December 21st is a two-hour early dismissal. December 22nd through January 2nd, 2023 is winter break. High school addition, uh, no change to the schedule. I did add one item, uh, to the, um, important dates. August 15th, 2023 is the completion date for our science room renovation and our restroom, uh, renovation. So it's really a phased project, and we are not gonna be into that science lab, um, until April, so they've got, uh, multiple months during the summertime to complete that. So, wanted to make certain and add that to the important, uh, dates. Um, overall project completion, again, scheduled for, uh, the end of June, uh, but the very last phase, which is science rooms, or the chemistry lab, uh, Mark Statham's chemistry lab, and also restroom renovation is in the middle of August. No change to priorities, uh, no change, uh, to, um, the location for, uh, information in terms of our centralized website. In terms of progress with the construction outfit, uh, Area A is, uh, receiving, uh, structural steel and masonry work, that's in progress, as I'm certain you can see that as you drive by the east side of the high school. Uh, here's a shot from standing on the library over the, uh, over the project. Uh, again, you can see the structural steel being placed, um, and then Area A is obviously here. Area B is down further in front of, um, the southeast entrance, and then Area C is way on the north, uh, the north end. It is very interesting from a construction standpoint to note, uh, that the, that the addition is not tied into your existing, um, your existing, uh, building, for lack of a better phrase. It's like a standalone building, which I found very interesting when I was speaking with Operations Manager Henshaw and the architect in terms of how that is constructed. So, um, no load-bearing weight, for lack of a better phrase, et cetera. It's just an interesting design, looks to be a, looks to be a good design. Uh, Area B, construction is in progress. Um, footings, foundation walls, all of those respective items are going in, and then as that is completed, the masonry and the structural steel will continue, uh, continue through. This is Area A masonry work. Area B footing, foundation construction, and foundation walls in progress. Uh, the structural steel is up at the, um, the northeast entrance, so you can see the, the, the entrance beginning to take shape. This is ultimately an image of the foundation walls going up or, uh, being prepared for concrete in, uh, in Area B. Footing construction in Area C, so this is the furthest, uh, northeast corner of our addition. You can see kind of how that jogs out, um, a bit further, and, uh, you can really start to see the shape of the building, uh, beginning to take design. Again, furthest northeast corner staring to the north at our new neighbor. And then Area C footing, construction in progress. Again, that needs, uh, to be formed up, but will be formed up and poured here in the, uh, coming weeks. And then lastly, again, the teacher compensation accountability, uh, report is also included within the superintendent's report for, uh, your respective review. With that, would certainly field any questions you may have.
Not so much a question, or I guess you can clarify. Um, looking at the teacher compensation, I know that's from 2017, and we can look further at the latest report, but the schools, even, uh, Ogallala Lakota and Eagle Butte and, I know Sioux Falls even ranks up there, would it be fair to state that they have in the double digits and quite a bit higher in federal funding where we fall in the low single digits?
Ms. Saxor, you are probably downplaying it a little bit. Uh, as an individual who has experience with, um, some of those types of funding, it is, it is pretty, uh, yeah, it is pretty dramatic, for lack of a better phrase. I would say, obviously, Brandon Valley at two and, uh, Sioux Falls at three. We are the only two schools, um, in that, uh, group that do not receive Impact Aid, which is a significant, um, federal resource for those, uh, schools that do receive it. Uh, obviously, there are some title funds and those various things involved too, that we do get a small portion of that, but there are some very large, uh, federal revenues, um, included within these respective schools other than Sioux Falls, so, um, you are absolutely spot-on.
I just wanted to probably point that out, I guess it's very clear, but just again, to the work that, um, Mr. Lombard and his staff, and again, that we all pulled together to make sure that we really utilize the funds that we do have at our disposal, um, that are really here within kind of the local, um, but also what we do get from the state to give to our, our staff, because they are really the motor behind what gets done in the district.
Anything else for Superintendent Larson? All right. Mr. Lombard, anything additional? Uh, high school, Mr. Schlockaway?
Thank you. I would just like to recognize, uh, take a minute to recognize all of our students that are in extracurricular activities, whether that is athletics, uh, fine arts, as we, um, mentioned, uh, last meeting. Uh, it's, we got a ton of student athletes and a ton of students involved in things. So, we're coming up on concert season. We have, uh, chorus concert tomorrow night, orchestra concerts coming up. Uh, on top of that, our, uh, boys golf team had a great season, finished sixth last week, uh, at State Golf. Um, girls soccer had a hard-fought quarterfinal match Saturday, amazing, uh, went till the end, got beat by a good team, but played really well. Um, so their season is over. Um, boys soccer entered the tournament as the 16th seed, um, and so, uh, beat the number-one seed in the state of South Dakota, followed that up with a win. So they played tomorrow at 4 o'clock at Howard Wood Field in the semifinals, uh, so that's exciting for us. Um, additionally, uh, cross-country cheer and dance state events are coming up on October 22nd, so we're kind of winding some of those things down. Um, and then I wanted to have a special shout-out to our marching links. Um, so pretty cool weekend they had. Um, their show jackpot, um, placed third up in the cities at what we call Youth in Music, uh, and that is the highest, uh, finish that we have ever had. A pretty amazing, I came up to the high school last night as they arrived home. A pretty crazy scene between, um, all the people that welcomed them home, along with the fire trucks bringing them in, um, the excitement when they got off the bus. Um, so kudos to Mr. Netted, 150 students are involved in our marching links. Add to that their parents that volunteer, the amount of hours, time and energy, I've been listening to them since July. So, uh, just kudos to them. Uh, Mr. Netted, he said if they finish in the top four, he will lose half of his beard. Uh, so tomorrow, if you've seen his beard, he's gonna have a half beard that he's gonna go through the day. So, um, pretty neat, um, pretty remarkable what this group has accomplished. Uh, the really, uh, the thing that you want with your, um, your students and when they perform is you want them to be at the best at the end, and Mr. Netted said, "The best performance we have had all year." So, congrats to that entire group, I just wanted to recognize them in front of you. Any questions you have for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Moore or Mr. Paula, anything additional? Uh, middle school, Dr. Nelson? Mr. Othenberger? Mistress Gibson? Mr. Pearson? Mrs. Otime, anything tonight? How about elementaries? Anyone? Mrs. Nelson, anything? Mr. Henshaw? And I'm betting Mr. Farkin is probably busy. All right. Uh, board policy, we do not have any of that tonight. That takes us to our general business items. I would entertain a motion to approve items one through three, please.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Personnel, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through five.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item six is for information only. Under communication, we have some, I believe there's some building permit applications there for your review, if you'd like to look at those. Uh, there's a thank you to the Board of Education from some staff. That takes us to our formal board reports. Does anyone have one that they would like to share tonight?
The, uh, Transportation Committee met on Thursday, I believe. Again, knocking it out of the park, and, and we're obviously thankful for all the, the help through the staff with the, um, construction and the headaches that that causes with the transportation. But, um, just going through, uh, this year, we have the 23 AM routes and 24 PM routes that has changed a little bit from the last couple of years. I think it's a, in a good change. Uh, the, uh, the fleet itself, there's 37 buses, two mini buses, 14 Suburbans, seven vans, four cars, and eight pickups. Mr. Lombard was mentioning earlier that there's the three propane buses that we just got, uh, delivered, and as far as I know, they are getting put to use here very shortly, if not out on the roads. So that's exciting and a little nerve-wracking to see how those work for us, especially with the, uh, diesel prices the way they are. Also, there's a wheelchair van that is, we are still in search of, so if anybody knows of a wheelchair van, please talk to Ty. With it, with anything, with, with COVID and with all this new construction going on, uh, there's, there's always positives that you have to look through the weeds and find. Um, with, with the schools starting, we, we delayed the JKK and EC, um, start dates, and that's been a huge blessing, not just for those teachers, but for also those bus drivers and, and anybody dealing with transportation. So that's, that's been a blessing for those kids, any, everybody involved. Also, another one was, that's helped a lot with the transportation, was the zero hour. So, kudos to you guys for making that, uh, work. Having the kids come early, having the seniors, any kids that are leaving later, that helps, you know, with the traffic outside, so, um, another blessing in disguise. So, I think some of those things we are looking to continue. It's not just, uh, "We're gonna do this because construction," or "We're gonna do this because of COVID," but it's these things that we find and we get lucky, somebody said. So, again, thank you. So again, thank you.
I have two separate updates. One is on the ASBSD resolutions or proposed resolutions that are on there. I'm sure you've all read through the magnazium because they're super fun. A few I just want to draw your attention to. There are kind of three things that really are what we're trying to go through for this year. Trying to gain as much public education support advocacy as possible from our legislators. And once we gain that support, we don't want to divide their drive and support for our priorities. So we don't want to divide that drive between so many different resolutions and bills that are in front of them. So we really want to make sure we have the priority set in front of them. So you'll see a lot of different resolutions that are on here. There are standing resolutions, there are things that are always on there, but we're really trying to choose what we want to put our efforts behind for this next year on the Hill. So that's why there's a lot of proposed deletions, but that's not meaning that there aren't somewhere else there. The third thing is, is we don't want to divide all the different kind of funding sources. We just want one funding source, give us all the money you can, and let us decide where we want to use that. So the first thing I want to draw your attention to is Resolution A4. You're going to see school employee compensation, proposed deletion. Don't freak out. It's mentioned in big caps in Resolution C6, and that is where we're trying to delete having a growth cap. We're really undermining the intelligence of our individuals that we pay to go and be policy advocates to get the most money that we can. So we don't want to have the 3% lesser, greater, whatever, just go whatever it is, because quite honestly, with inflation, there's a lot of money on the table. So we're just going to go and go after the most that we can. So that's why that's deleted there, and you'll see it further down. B9, behavioral health, mental health, huge issue this year. So we're going to hear a lot about that. Again, we want the funding for it, but don't take that away from the large, you know, bucket that can be additive. So that's a big thing you'll hear a lot about. B12, this one's kind of a head-scratcher on why we're advocating for it for school board and bond elections. This is something that there's quite a few legislators that really want to have that set for the second Tuesday in April or June, because at this point, it's been something that all local school boards had been able to choose. The reason is, and again, I just said, we're trying to gain a lot of advocacy, so if we give this, we can gain a lot of support. It's not a bad reason. You can see the numbers. We don't get a lot of people out to vote at the polls as it is for school board things. It still states in there, though, there's local control if we need to set for bond elections. So if we can work things out, we do have some neighboring school boards, such as Sioux Falls and others, that we might have to work things out. But that's why there's support for right now. We'll see where it goes, but that is to gain us some support in other areas that we want that. So that's why it's there. C6, I mentioned, we're going to max out what we can get, rather than having that 3% inflation factor, all that kind of jazz. The final one, I know I've talked to Mr. Schleckway about this, and all that we're trying to go and continue to build in the Brandon Valley School District is that CTE, and we're gaining the state support in putting money towards grants for the infrastructure for CTE. And what's stated in there is whatever the state puts forward, we would then have local entities match those grant funds. So that is the other kind of big thing that's new that we're trying to put our effort behind. So those are just some of the things there. Nothing huge, nothing new, but there's some changes because we really want to get the funneled focus and support. So if you have any other questions, if you're reading it and you're really upset about something, or if you want to change some words, let me know. I might answer on those things. For the wellness committee meeting, we had that today. I'm just blown away by what they've all been done. They talked about, there's been a lot of shortages, they can only get apple juice, chicken and turkey and hamburgers, they can't hardly get off the trucks. And I'm sure you guys see it at the school, but I can tell you from a parent's point of view, I guess we haven't seen, there's been a lot of stress and helter-skelter. They're handling it really well, and I know I've talked to other school districts, and it's not seamless. I know that they've been making runs to local grocery stores just to try to get food on the plates. So I appreciate all that they're doing to feed over the 5,000 kiddos that we have coming through the doors. The biggest thing they wanted to communicate is they are trying to get to the admin teams at each of the schools, the changes, but the most live time updates if parents want them is on that app or online. So that's where they get that from. The free and reduced applications, we're over 300 now, but they're at a $4,000 deficit. So if we can get parents to fill those out, that will help us out greatly. They were able to get the fuel up monies for every school, which is fantastic. So they're going to do the essay contest, get the kids' photos on the walls, decorate, but they're also going to reserve some funds to give to the PE programs. So I think that's a great thing to do. They're doing K through four education, the classrooms. I guess her calendar filled up within a half hour, so I think that's phenomenal, but they're going to keep, try to do that into the next couple of semesters. Oh, so huge topic of conversation. You can let me know if you disagree, but the 25 calorie rule, I guess that's been asked about. It's not a district policy, it's nowhere in the books. So they've been asked a lot, it's nothing that they have either, so they are sticking to, it needs to be a smart snack, and I think you guys can look up what that is. It can't be a shared snack, but there is no 25 calorie rule. Some schools it's enforced, some schools it's not, some seasons it's enforced, some seasons it's not. So there is no 25 calorie rule. So there is, it's, there isn't. So that's what we're stating, that's what it is. You, as a building admin, can choose to put something out differently, but that is not something that the wellness team or committee is, has on their plate. So that's the answer. And there will be a wellness fair in 2024. Questions? Concerns?
What is the 25 calorie rule?
The 25 calorie rule was if teachers wanted to hand out like an incentive or whatever it might be, or like a quiz, they had to give a snack that was under 25 calories. The biggest thing that they said, you know, I could give a Jolly Rancher, that's 25 empty calories, I could give something that has 25 good calories, 30 good calories, and it's just kind of hard to do all that kind of stuff. So the hard part there is they have no policy to stand on because it's, it's not. So they just would like it to be a smart snack. Yep. Good question.
I just want to restate out loud that the ASBSD school board and school bond elections item would not affect our right to set a different bond election date.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Some travel reports there for your review. Otherwise, it looks like that takes us to the end of our scheduled agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for coming.